Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present at 4:05 PM. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by...
What happened?
All members aren't present.
Okay, so we're waiting for for the Vice Mayor Patterson to show. So, all members present except Vice Mayor Patterson. Okay. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Reyes English.
Face the flag. Repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
City Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of this special meeting. There were no speaker cards.
Is there anybody wishing to speak? This is a special meeting, just so you guys could keep that in consideration. City staff, anybody want to talk about? Okay. Okay, I have no cards. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. I would like to call Finance Director Felice Lopez to the podium for a presentation.
Thank you, Felice. Mayor Vargas, members of the council, I'm pleased to have our kickoff financial, or excuse me, fiscal year 2022-2023 proposed budget. The City of Hawthorne, along with other cities, struggled the last few years due to the pandemic. But the City of Hawthorne has made massive strides in these times by recreating and repurposing the way we conduct business. What you will see in this proposed budget is how the city has adapted to the circumstances in our community. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Finance Director Felice Lopez. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to be back. The first in-person meeting. I am going to summarize the budget, and then, once I've completed my summary, then we're going to bring up each department head to give a brief summary of their work plans for the fiscal year. And you do all have a copy of the presentation in your binders, so you can take notes. So, our goal here today with this budget process is to provide a clear and concise budget proposal to the city council. As in prior fiscal years, during the current 2122 fiscal year, we have continued to encourage all departments to emphasize accuracy in providing descriptions and the use of account numbers for expenditures in order to promote transparency to all stakeholders. And what I am happy to say is that we are starting out with a surplus of revenues over expenditures. So, we'll start with our expenditures. Our surplus is about $260,000. And we... Our expenditures for 2223 is $88,537,834. The majority of that increase is in salary and benefits. It's about a 6% increase, and that's due primarily to MOU-negotiated items that were approved in August of 2021. So, the first department that we'd like to start with is City Council and Treasurer. The proposed budget for both of those programs is $239,973. That's about a $61,000 increase. And that increase is in contract services, salary and benefits, and travel and conferences. For non-departmental, we have a proposed budget of $10,695,000. That's an increase of about $2.3 million. And this includes increases in retiree health, emergency preparedness, centennial expenses, operating transfers for bonds, and for city property management. For Measure HH, we have a budget of $3,948,000, and that's a $229,000 increase. And the majority of that increase is for 911 operations. For fire services, we have a budget of $13,900,000. That's an increase of $700,000 from the prior year, and that's all fire service fees. For the City Manager, we have a budget of $819,000. That's an increase of $178,000. That would include contract services, travel and conferences, and general expenditures. For the City Attorney, we have a budget of $1,299,000. That's an increase of $446,000. And that is primarily in contract services and receiverships, and in aligning expenditures with the correct programs. For City Clerk, we have a proposed budget of $511,954. That's an increase of $209,000, and this is primarily for election costs, which we see every other year. For the Finance Department, we have a budget of $1,096,000. That's an increase of $142,000, and this is primarily for the addition of one accountant's position. And this is to help stay in line with the reporting requirements that are coming in from all of our grants. For Business License, we have a budget of $939,000. It's a $66,000 increase, and that's primarily in salary and benefits. For Human Resources, we have a budget of $1,016,000. That's an increase of $139,000 from last year. And this is in contract services, testing, training, and educational reimbursement. For the Police Department, we have a budget of $37.9 million. That's a $2.1 million increase. The increases are in liability insurance, building maintenance, operating supplies, ambulance services, utilities, and forensics testing. For Information Technology Services, we have a budget of $30,50,000. That's an increase of $633,000 from prior year. And the majority of that increase is in contract services and equipment. And the contract services would be for maintenance of current projects that are underway from the current fiscal year. For Public Works, we have a budget of $3.3 million. That's an increase of about $1 million. And their increases are primarily in salary and benefits, which are related to SB 1383, new requirements and grant deadlines, in contract services, in air conditioning maintenance, and other repairs and maintenance costs. For the Planning Department, we have a budget of $2.4 million. It's an increase of about $379,000. And this is related to contract services for the housing element and for cannabis processing. For Building and Safety, we have a budget of $1.6 million. It's about a $155,000 increase. And this is in contract services for expediting plans and inspections. For Community Services, we have a budget of $5,580,000. That's an increase of about $387,000. And this is for homeless services, park maintenance, tree trimming, building maintenance, and park grants. The total increase for this fiscal year is $9.2 million. It's about a 12% increase from the prior fiscal year. We have Grants and Restricted Funds, which is a total of $103,262,000. That's in addition of almost $30 million in Grants and Restricted Funds. And the total expenditure budget that we're proposing for 2223 is $191,799,968. And just for the increases in Grants and Restricted Funds, those consist of the American Rescue Plan Act for $15 million, Insurance Reserve for $1.9 million, Street Improvements for about $2 million, Planning Grants of $1.8 million, and Park Grants of $5.5 million.
Felice, where do you have that as the Grants and Restricted Funds? Where do you have that broken down? Should it be in the budget?
No, that's just my notes for all of the different grants. And you, as you go through your binder, you'll see those listed under each of the departments that are responsible for those grants.
Whether now or soon, could you maybe have a single page that just breaks those down, please?
For all of the different funds?
Yes, for everything that adds up to $103 million.
Sure.
It'd be good to just have it on one page instead of having to look at the separate departments. That's all. See if you could do that for the next meeting or something.
Well, that'll, yes, definitely for the final presentation.
And actually, that's a good thing, because then we could just kind of boast and be happy and celebrate all the good work that our people have been doing, right?
All right. And now I'm going to move to our next slide. And this is same expenditure budget of $88 million, but this is broken down by percentage for each department and by category. So, if you'll see that the police is our largest expenditure, the Police Department is $37,964,000. Fire Services is 16% of our budget. Info Technology Services is 3% of our budget. Public Works, Building and Safety, Community Services, and Planning make up 15% of our budget. Legislative and Administrative, which is all other departments, and that's listed right below, that makes up 7% of our budget, and Non-Departmental is 16% of the city's budget. And looking down at the bottom graph, by category, Personnel is our largest, at 50% of our budget, is $44.2 million. Retiree Health and Employee Relations is $4 million, which is 5% of our budget. Contract Services is 21% of the budget at 18.8 million. And just as a reminder, 13.9 of that is Fire Services, and $3 million is for 911 operations. Maintenance and Operations is 15% of the city's budget. Interdepartmental Charges is 5% of the city's budget, and Operating Transfers is 4%. Capital Outlay is $345,000, which is not even a percentage, 1%. Any questions, or I'll move on to the revenues? Okay, so our revenues are for 2223, $88,797,925. Again, this is a surplus of $260,000 over expenditures. Our largest increase, of course, is always in taxes. We have a proposed budget for taxes of $64.5 million, which is an increase of $7.5 million. For Licenses and Permits, we had a decrease of $347,000, and that is primarily in construction permits. Fines and forfeitures remains the same at $2.6 million. Revenue from use of money, which is interest on investments, is $300,000, which is a $150,000 increase. Intergovernmental State, which includes vehicle license fee and state mandated costs, is $12,847,000. That's an increase of $851,000. Intergovernmental County, which are park grants, is $160,000, and that's an increase of $33,000. Service charges are $2.9 million, and that's an increase of $727,000. For Other Revenue, which is contribution from water, contribution from refuse, and services for ITT that are reimbursed to the city, is $2,270,000. That's an $87,000 increase. For Program Contributions, from Proposition A, this goes to Transit Police. There is a $1 million budget, and that's an increase of $200,000. For Program Contributions for Airship, from the COPS grant, it's $300,000, and it's an increase of $100,000 from the prior fiscal year. So, it's an increase of about 12%. Total increase of $9,327,000. Retiree Health and Employee Relations is $4 million, which is 5% of our budget. Contract Services is 21% of the budget at 18.8 million. And just as a reminder, 13.9 of that is Fire Services, and $3 million is for 911 operations. Maintenance and Operations is 15% of the city's budget. Interdepartmental Charges is 5% of the city's budget, and Operating Transfers is 4%. Capital Outlay is $345,000, which is not even a percentage, 1%. Any questions, or I'll move on to the revenues? Okay, so our revenues are for 2223, $88,797,925. Again, this is a surplus of $260,000 over expenditures. Our largest increase, of course, is always in taxes. We have a proposed budget for taxes of $64.5 million, which is an increase of $7.5 million. For Licenses and Permits, we had a decrease of $347,000, and that is primarily in construction permits. Fines and forfeitures remains the same at $2.6 million. Revenue from use of money, which is interest on investments, is $300,000, which is a $150,000 increase. Intergovernmental State, which includes vehicle license fee and state mandated costs, is $12,847,000. That's an increase of $851,000. Intergovernmental County, which are park grants, is $160,000, and that's an increase of $33,000. Service charges are $2.9 million, and that's an increase of $727,000. For Other Revenue, which is contribution from water, contribution from refuse, and services for ITT that are reimbursed to the city, is $2,270,000. That's an $87,000 increase. For Program Contributions, from Proposition A, this goes to Transit Police. There is a $1 million budget, and that's an increase of $200,000. For Program Contributions for Airship, from the COPS grant, it's $300,000, and it's an increase of $100,000 from the prior fiscal year. So, it's an increase of about 12%. Total increase of $9,320,000. For Grants and Restricted Funds, we have a budget of $96.1 million, and a total revenue budget for 2223 of $184,902,140. And this is just in graph form. As you can see, taxes are, make up the majority of the city's revenues at 73%. Licenses and Permits are 2% of the city's revenue budget. Fines and forfeitures are 3%. Revenue from use of money is a 0.3%. Intergovernmental State is 15%. County Intergovernmental is 0.2%. Service charges are 3% of the city's revenue budget. Miscellaneous or other revenue is 2%. And program contributions are 2% of the city's revenue budget. And this concludes my presentation, and we'd like to bring up each individual department for their presentation of their 2223 work plans. If you, do you have any questions now, or do you want to wait until we move through the departments? Okay?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Do some preliminary questions. She forgot what my question was. So, I see that we are, our revenue is up about $9 million, and our expenses are up about $9 million. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that a coincidence?
No, it, I mean, it just, it turns out that we were able to meet the expenditures, proposed expenditures that were slightly lower than what the revenues that came in.
So, I'm curious, how are these numbers put together? Do we go and look at how much money is needed first, and put together kind of expense budget first, and then look and see if there's money for it?
No.
Do we look and get the revenue numbers first, and then kind of tailor the expenses to match?
We look at the revenue numbers first, because we meet with our consultants, and they put together their estimates. And they're fairly, all of the estimates that we've received from our consultants from HDL have been pretty much right on every year. And so, they give us our property tax, our sales tax, TOT. They provide us with that information. And then, we look back kind of historically at all of our other revenues to propose the new revenue for the following fiscal year. Once we have that, then we look at the expenditures proposed by the departments. If that should go over what revenues we have anticipated, then we would ask the departments to go back and cut their budgets.
Got it.
But we don't start, we don't start out by saying, oh, you've only got $80 million, and that's how much we have to stay with. We don't, we don't, we don't really give them an amount. We want to see what's needed. And at that point, once we, once we compare whether we've got a surplus or a deficit, then we go back and ask the departments for either cuts or just discuss what it is that they're requesting and see if it's really needed.
Got it. That makes sense. It, it, the idea came to me that might be something that we might want to discuss as a council, just the idea of planning in some, a specific amount of surplus. All right, so this, we had a surplus of about $200,000 based upon this budget. But an idea could be, you know, to start off with whatever, minimum 5% will go into just requiring there be a surplus. There's extra money that goes in the bank. Just something kind of to think about and maybe discuss for some time in the future. And then, you know, look at spinning up into, you know, what that number is, you know, after we've kind of taken out, say, 5% of the other planned revenues. Another question I had was, I know in the past, you've provided a more detailed breakdown of tax revenue. Is that anywhere in this, in our package?
That, that comes in the final budget proposal. We can give you that. So, I have a copy of, that's, that's my notes. So, I can give you information on those revenue line items. But if you want a copy of all of those line items, we can give you that as well.
Yeah.
But it's not included here, because it's just a summary of all of the line items.
Sure, I mean, at some point, I'd like to have that. I think I have one other question, and it's really concerning City Attorney's kind of expenses. I don't know if right now is the time to ask, or when the City Attorney is talking about his budget. But I know at one point, there is, the City Attorney would be in charge of, of course, legal services for the entire city. And some of these may originate from other departments, and I think there was kind of a question about how we should account for that.
Right, and we do have some departments who have now budgeted for those expenditures in their departments. If it, so I know that we've added legal fees to planning, to HR, to the Police Department. So, the, so the ones that normally have those types of fees, if there is a department that didn't budget for it, and they happen to have it next year, then we'll just have to bring that back to council as needed. But they have been added to their specific departments for this fiscal year.
Thank you, thank you.
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Felice. Thank you for the presentation. When you talk about, you know, taxes, right, because like 73% of our revenue come from taxes. And then, you put a $7.9 million increase for 2022-23, right? So, have you guys talked about with HDL, the possibility that, because there is talking out there that we're going to go to a recession, right? That people are not going to be spending a lot of money, especially because what's going on with the market, right? We got inflation going on. So, people are going to start not to buy a lot of stuff like they did in 2022 or 2021, because they have extra income. Now, they don't have those stimulus dollars and anything like that. So, have you guys kind of like, take like a balance of if the taxes revenue doesn't come the way you're projecting?
Right. HDL is always very conservative in their estimates. We were on a webinar about a week ago where they are not very concerned about the recession. They're, they're looking at it closely, and if between now and the time that we approve the final budget, they see something change, they will let us know. But they're very conservative in the numbers that they present to us.
Because, because when you talk about that, we have about $262,000 surplus, in my head, that's, it's not enough, right? Because, you know, it can go like that, right? Like, and, and so, just to keep that in mind, that it's not, the surplus,
Right.
you know, it's not that much, right, when it comes down. Because if we depend a lot of 72% on taxes, and then if sales tax start going down and the TOT...
And, and so, the increases, and I'll, I'll give you those increases. We have about $377,000 increase in property taxes. $1.4 million is what they estimated would increase for the Measure HH. $2.9 million is what they're estimating will increase for our Bradley Burns tax. We have about $1 million increasing in TOT for the hotels, and then $1 million in business license taxes. So, it's, it's not all in one, right. It's, it's not all in one revenue area.
Okay, good. It's spread all across the board. Yeah. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Through the chair. Yes, thank you, Felice, for that presentation. With the $262,000 surplus, I want to ask something related to a question that was asked by the mayor pro tem, and that is, did we already set aside anything for reserves or reserve fund, or is that something we as a council have to do affirmatively?
If council would like to, so the reserve comes from the amount of money that is not spent in the current fiscal year, and any additional revenue that is received above and beyond what was already estimated. But if the council decides that they want to set aside $500,000 or $200,000, then that would be something that, that they would direct us to do.
But other than that, you wouldn't, you would do what with the surplus?
It goes into the fund balance. It goes into the cash balance.
It goes into the cash balance?
The total that we, that I report to you for each month.
It would go into the cash balance and not be spent until you're directed to do something with it by us? That's correct?
Correct, because we stick within the budget that we've approved for that year.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, all right. And I'd like to start bringing up the individual departments. We'll have Mr. Norris, our City Manager, discussing the budgets for council, non-departmental, City Manager, City Treasurer, and City Clerk.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. It feels good to be back in the chamber, so thank you for joining us. What we're going to do as a group, we're going to talk about changes from the prior year. We'll also speak about fiscal year 21, excuse me, 20, 2020-21 accomplishments. And then, we'll discuss fiscal year 2022-2023 work plans. As Felice mentioned, I'm going to cover the council, treasurer, non-departmental, and city manager. So, changes from last year, a quote I like to use, a sharpening saw. We took an active role in our elected officials attending conferences and trainings. Our leadership is very important for the city. We did appoint a city treasurer, implementation of the American Rescue Act funding. We have kiosks at City Hall, and we actually established Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee. Those are some of the highlights, the changes from the prior year. Accomplishments, the City Manager was able to assist in managing in-person meetings and opening City Hall to the public, developing a formal policy and structure for management of the City Council agenda items, support in successful 2022 Business Expo, assisting with the campus ordinance, assigned support staff to the City Clerk's office. We have a full-staff HR department, which is going to assist us in getting staff on board. And our work plan for those departments is investing into the workforce. Leadership is important, but also the workforce taking an active role to educate those individuals. Secondly, develop a formal community relation program, update our emergency management program, oversee the implementation of a virtual city hall, our centennial celebration, which is a few months away, very big. And lastly, allocate training budget for our treasurer's office and other elected officials. Any questions? Any questions? Okay. We'll turn it back over to Felice. Thank you.
I am next in line, um, so I will give you our finance and licensing um budget work plans for next year. So the finance department manages the fiscal operations of the city and maintains financial records in conformance with generally accepted accounting principles in compliance with state and federal laws. The department's primary functions include financial planning, budgeting, disbursement control, revenue administration, accounting and reporting, grant management, purchasing, payroll, and business licensing. Um, so in the um current fiscal year, we were able to implement the Tyler Cashier system. It went live on um May second, so we're just about in, into the second week, um, trying to get the kinks out of it, but it's um so far going well. Uh, we've implemented um a plan to address the city's long-term O P E B liabilities. We've completed all required state, local, and federal compliance audits. Uh, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we are requesting um an additional accountant in order to maintain service levels and demands for increase in fi- um, in the finance department. Our work plans for twenty-two, twenty-three are, um, once a revenue and a P manager has been hired to develop and implement, implement a plan to convert vendor payments to A C H. I know that's been a request for a while, um, so we're hoping that once um this new person is in place, that we can go ahead and start looking into doing that. The city's filming permit ordinance, um, hopefully can also be reviewed once the revenue and A P manager is in place. Along with the H R director, we'd like to complete the process of review for the four fifty-seven plan options offered to employees. Work with the city manager to provide fraud awareness training to finance staff and to schedule information sessions for all other departments as well. We would like to complete the development-related user fee study and cost allocation plan and to conduct a study of non-department, um, non, non-development-related um fees, which would be like the parks fees, um, anything that, um, that isn't related to planning and construction. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Through the chair. Can you explain what we're doing as far as the four fifty-seven plan? That's a pension plan of some sort?
Um, that's our deferred comp, um, and it's um.
Is this new?
No, no, it's been offered um probably for over thirty years. Um, so we currently offer three plans to employees. Um, and about a year and a half, two years ago, um, the city manager directed us to evaluate all the plans, um, so that we can select one um plan for all employees, so there aren't um three different service charges being charged to employees, which makes it a little more expensive for them to invest their, their funds. And so that's been in the process for about a year.
So where are you with this, uh, with respect to this particular plan? You've selected one plan now, the two?
We have not. So they uh were researching, they were gathering all the information, and H R and finance now has to set up a meeting with them to um, we have to, we have to put together a um, a group from the city that will um listen to all the different options, and then as a group, we would select uh which plan is the best for the employees.
What employees get the benefit of the deferred compensation plan?
Everyone, everyone that, that is an employee is offered this plan.
And about what percent actually sign up for it?
Hmm, I don't know. I don't know if H R has ever kept um statistics on that. I, I, I think most employees, even if they, even if they only contribute twenty dollars a pay period, I think that most employees contribute something.
And what we can do, Felice, we can bring this item back in the next quarter and give an update to council where we are as far as our research on this item.
Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Felice, first of all. I'm going to talk a little bit about the departments, um, the, that take in checks and take in processes and whatnot. And like most council members, we always hear from businesses that their checks are still pending, they haven't been cashed yet, they haven't received their licensing yet, and sometimes those uh checks are in hold status with our office here at city hall, and it's beyond the six-month period of time. And so those types of, you know, responses, or I should say remarks to us is concerning. So I'm just curious how you're managing that to assure that we're, first of all, cashing those checks and making sure that our, our city is receiving those payments, and most importantly, that businesses are receiving their business licenses. So that's one. I know you mentioned you wanted to hire another uh person, an accounting person. Do we have someone that's over the department to find out the processing of uh checks and the processing of accepting payments?
That's um person is in the process of being hired.
That position's out for recruitment. We're looking to do interviews in a couple of weeks to fill that position very soon.
Okay, that's very critical, and that's one position that um.
Yeah, and it's been vacant for about a year now.
Exactly, that's, that's, you know, the concerning. Do we also have an idea of how many businesses have left the city of Hawthorne? Do we have an idea of like the last two years and the last year?
We can, we can look into that.
If we could just make that a regular, um, something that's implemented that shows either how many new businesses have come into the city and, or uh how many businesses have left, to just give us an idea of, of, and then if there's any types of uh surveys or something that you provide to those businesses as to why they're leaving, that's important. That's like, uh, for me.
Okay, and, and, and going back to the checks, um, I know that during license, the licensing period, the heavy licensing period, which is January through March, um, they cash checks and process checks as they receive them, so, and it's bins full a day. So they go through it as quickly as they can, there's three employees there, um, and if they run into um a business who did not complete their application correctly, they send those checks back, they, because they don't take partial payments. So I think that's sometimes the back and forth with the businesses, they, they don't take partial payments because then it's harder to collect the balance. So um they send back the check and then let them know, this is what you owe, and this is what we need you to send back into us. So there's, there is definitely a delay, but it's, you know, the three employees have been working non-stop.
Okay, and the internal use of operations for the training and whatnot is continuous?
We are, we are trying to get, yes, we're trying to get everyone trained and up to date on any new procedures.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Next, all right, um, we'd like to bring up Ms. Lampkin from our H R department.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, remaining council members. My name is Erica Lampkin, and I'm your H R manager. Excuse me, the H R department provides support services for the city's full-time and part-time employees. Those services include recruitment selection, benefit administration, um, employee relations, labor relations, training. Some of the accomplishments, even some prior to my arrival, um, were to assist with COVID-19 precautions and safety measures, re-establishing a performance evaluation, and um, I'm working with the city attorney right now, finalizing the employee manual and employee personnel rules. Um, we restarted the veterans commission last month, and since I've been here in January, we have opened up thirty recruitments. Um, some of the changes you'll see in our budget is um an increase in contract um services as a result of COVID and as a result of the city attorney transferring H R matters um to me or to the department for legal services. Um, you will, and see increased trainings citywide, and um you will see that we have changed one of our positions from H R specialist to H R analyst. Um, some of our work plans will include streamlining communications with our bargaining units and overall citywide communications with our employees. Excuse me, and um you will see that we will create a benefit health fair. We want to acknowledge employees, um, and we want to create a staff appreciation day. As our director of, of finance alluded to, we will be working on the four fifty-seven plan, and we will be completing the part-time negotiations for H M E A. And that concludes the presentation for H R.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Um, you talked about the employee evaluation?
Yes.
So you're working on that, you say?
Oh, thank you.
Um, where, where in the process is that? Because I know it's been worked on for a long time.
It, I am trying to find what my predecessor left. Unfortunately, um, there, there were not good notes, but my, I am told that um each uh department head was giving a book of training um in order to perform the evaluations, and that all evaluations should be completed by June thirtieth.
So you, you, you do have a, a standard now?
Yes, there is a standard.
That you've set up, and this will all be completed by June thirtieth?
That is correct.
Okay, and um. Okay, so, um, so can we get a preview of it? Can we find out exactly what, where, where this is? This is very important because the employees need to know what their status is.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
So they'll know whether they're doing a good job, whether they deserve to be, to be promoted or demoted or whatever, but they need to know.
Feedback is critical um for performance. I agree with you one hundred percent, and I'll make sure that it gets done.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody has something to say. It was just funny what you said earlier.
It's not you. Okay.
Since we're talking about employee evaluations, um, I'm curious, will these be three sixty evaluations?
My knowledge, they are not. We can, I, I don't know at this point if they have been worked on and the directors are getting them done now, that we could have a three sixty, but I can assure you in the next fiscal year, that I can create a template that three sixty evaluations get done.
That's awesome.
If I can interject on that, there is a portion on there. Yes, there is.
Okay.
Uh, there's a portion where the employee can uh give feedback to their supervisor, uh, which will be confidential between H R and that employee.
Okay. And I had a question, you had mentioned that there's a change from H R specialist to H R analyst?
Yes.
What's the difference?
Thank you. Duties and um.
Has more duties or less duties?
The analyst is at a higher level, and there's a higher expectation. Specialist is a little bit lower in terms of qualifications, skillset, and knowledge.
Got it. Oh, I'm okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, I was going to sarcastically say, did that, are those notes similar to the emergency preparedness notes?
Um, I haven't seen those emergency notes, so I can't speak to that.
Just joking.
No, but we want to say thank you very much because, you know, you, you are in that department, and uh you came in just, you know, and you take the, the job by the horns, right? Because you had to put thirty recruitment out there.
I did.
So, and that, you know, to establish all those um job description and, and to put them out there, so that is a tremendous uh job.
Thank you.
And thank you for all of that, because I know it took, it took a lot of hard work, a lot of time, a lot of, you know, courage to do, so thank you very much. So you commend to do that, uh, because we need those staff.
Yes, we do. We absolutely do.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just, I want to co-sign on that, I think, uh, and you came in the very beginning of this calendar year, correct?
Yes, I came January eighteenth, to be exact.
And I, I believe last year, last calendar year, I don't know if we hired anybody.
Oh, wow, okay, well, we had, just so you know, we've had five promotions in the last, since I've been here.
That's awesome.
Through the chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I just had one more question. You said that you were going to establish an employee appreciation day?
Yes.
We already had, we already did that with the council, we established one.
Okay, I should say make it happen again, not, not establish, make it happen again.
We established a yearly one, which means the only thing that needs to be chosen is a date.
Okay, then that'll be done.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. They deserve it.
They do.
And make sure they have pins, certificates, all that.
Yes, we'll make it fun.
Open enrollment, is that September?
That is September, and that will be where the benefit health fair will come in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And let me check your notes as soon as you're finished with your notes. I was holding that one, dude, I was.
Okay, we'd like to bring up Captain, Captain Tomitani from the police department.
Good afternoon, council members, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Pro Tem, Patterson. It's a pleasure to be here today. I'd like to start today's uh police department presentation by covering some of the accomplishments that we were able to navigate, uh, both as a department and as a city during the course of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year, which we're in right now. The police department was able to formalize an agreement with the city of Inglewood for the Hawthorne Police Department staff to be able to assist with events as a result of um the opening of the SoFi Stadium. So we did have a, a very, very regular, reasonable footprint at all the events at SoFi Stadium uh during the course of the current fiscal year. In addition to that agreement with the city of Inglewood, we entered into formal agreements with the city of Manhattan Beach, the city of El Segundo, and the city of Gardena to provide supplemental law enforcement services in terms of uh jail operations. So those um, those agreements with those three city entities vary in terms of um the magnitude of what we're offering. So for example, we are offering full-time, twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week uh jail services to El Segundo, but for Manhattan Beach, it is only on weekends, so basically from Friday through Monday morning. Um, and then with the assistance of our human resources department, we were able to fill several vacancies throughout the police department in both sworn positions and professional staff to include a records technician, um, two pre-service police officers, and one full-time jailer. So those are our main accomplishments. Again, none of that could have been done without the support of other city departments, so we're very grateful for them on that. Moving forward and focusing on what our work plans and what our priorities will be for the upcoming fiscal year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, is we currently stand at the police department with approximately eighty-eight sworn positions filled, so we have a few more to, to recruit for. So with the assistance of Ms. Lampkin, we've uh established that we would like to do recruiting and testing for those sworn positions at least quarterly until we can fill those vacancies. And we also um subsequently have uh several vacancies on our professional staff, so we would like to hire two more additional police records technicians, and there's a current recruitment going on for that. And we would like to hire two part-time parking enforcement officer positions that the, our professional staff is really the glue that keeps the day-to-day operations at the police department going forward. So we definitely want to prioritize those um as hiring priorities for the current upcoming fiscal year. Additionally, we want to increase our responsiveness and flexibility to solving problems that are brought to our attention by the stakeholders of the city. So that when I talk about the stakeholders, in addition, obviously, to our council members and other department heads, uh, we receive concerns and complaints and requests for service from businesses, neighborhood organizations, uh, school districts, and so on. And the way that we intend or would like to proceed with addressing those issues is by the utilization of technology. We've been able to build out a, uh, with the assistance of Josh and our I T staff, uh, been able to build out a relatively very, a very well-built-out camera system throughout the city. We want to continue to add that, and the flexibility to be able to put those cameras up within one to two weeks after receiving a specific request and monitor those cameras for investigative leads has really made our department day-to-day operations much more efficient over the course of the last three years. Um, the community is definitely our source of, the best source of our information, so in terms of community outreach, we intend to continue and increase the pace with which we deploy our community substation, which is the trailer that we announce on social media and deploy to various parts of our city, um, to have walk-up traffic, engage our officers in a non-enforcement type of setting where we find out exactly what their priorities are, and then we try to align our enforcement and priorities um accordingly, so that we are addressing what the community members in those specific neighborhoods like and want. So our partnerships with those community groups is, is a very, very high priority for us, um, not just to include neighborhood associations, school districts, council members, obviously, but also uh our neighboring law enforcement agencies who are a huge help to us, and we try to be a huge help to them. So we would like to continue to focus on those issues moving forward into the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. And lastly, on the information system side of the operations, um, rather lofty aspirations here, but we would like to begin a transition for city hall computers to move towards a virtual desktop um type of platform where you will not be tied down to a tower system or a C P U, traditional C P U. This is something that um our I, I T staff came up with as a result of the current pandemic. This is something that, um, our IT staff came up with as a result of the current pandemic. It will allow remote access and cuts down on hardware costs, um, overall for the entire city. So we'd like to start that transition at city hall. And we would also like to enhance, continue to enhance the wifi that is available at our city parks and the memorial center as that will actually assist us with the city clerk's office, uh, should we decide to start doing online voting at those, uh, venues. So those are our, uh, operational plans for the upcoming fiscal year.
Through the chair, I have a brief question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Captain.
Good evening.
So there is a, when you, you're talking about being in touch with the neighborhood associations, there's a gap in the, um, leadership in the neighborhood associations south of Ramona, south of North Hawthorne, over in the, um, uh, Rosecrans area. Do you have contacts with community leaders in those areas? Because we don't have community groups that are organized that we know of over there.
So as the, as the police department, we will facilitate, um, an organization of a community group. But we do know, we are very, very hesitant for obvious reasons to get involved in, um, the appointment of community leaders. I think that a much more, um, grassroots response would be that, however small the group is, is be willing to meet them halfway and meet there and perhaps use the police department presence and the city presence as a sort of a hook as, or as bait to, uh, have more community members come. And maybe those, maybe those, um, natural relationships that are established over, um, a meal or just a presentation on crime stats and trends in that neighborhood will lead to the neighborhoods organizing themselves and creating a better voice, more efficient voice for what their concerns are.
Thank you.
Through the chat. Council, English.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, I like the fact that, uh, there's a community trailer and that, uh, you're visual, you're, you're visible in the, in the community to a lot of, uh, individuals, more importantly, the businesses and, uh, community groups. And so I'd like to see, obviously, that happen a little bit more. I know there's, it happens during the week, but if maybe we could, uh, expand that a little bit, I think it'll address those that are, um, maybe unable to meet with you at that time. But, you know, there's a selection of more dates that they have an opportunity to attend or participate in.
Weekend hours or after normal business hours on weekday.
It doesn't have to be long, just enough to satisfy those that aren't able to make it.
Sure, I'm sure we'll be able to accommodate that.
And that's, uh, that's really big for me, uh, community policing. And then more importantly too, um, you made mention of, of more technology in the community, which is quite visible, we're seeing that already. It is a deterrent and, uh, I think, um, we have the flexibility to do that and we're very fortunate as a city to be able to do that. Uh, there's often times that, that dumping occurs in our community, on our streets. Although we've been trying to educate our community, Mayor, on, uh, contacting, uh, you know, your, your, your refuse service or, or sanitation to make a regular scheduled pickup. A lot of folks don't do that. However, um, the, 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 the ability to just monitor and see, um, where some of those hotspots are, uh, I think is important so that we could basically tell them, you know, enough is enough and no more. Because sometimes our, they're, we find that they're just the regular folks that are just lazy and just want to be able to just do it because they've been able to do that for some time. But, um, all of it is great to know that you guys are working hard on addressing, you know, the, the technology needs and more importantly, the community needs. And, um, although a lot of, of, uh, folks still want to be handheld in a sense and be, you know, be able to have, you know, that, that touch, if you will, personal touch, I do understand too that we're, we're, we're going in a, in a different way when it comes to with, uh, technology and just using that as a, as, as a future, because that, that is our future. But thank you so much for your report. Appreciate that.
Through the chair. I just want to remind everyone that what's on the agenda is a budget workshop, so we don't want to get into too much in-depth conversation. I understand each of the department head is, uh, discussing what they have accomplished and what they will accomplish, but this should be in the context of the budget workshop. So it's not, I mean, it's fine to go into certain discussion, limited discussion, but not in-depth, so.
Yeah.
I hate to be disrespectful of rules, but that's.
We'll make sure to give you the budget so we can continue to talk about this.
But in actuality, the Brown Act has laid that out, so we just, uh, let's just try to stick to the numbers and some brief comments. But everything's good.
Basically repeating everything he just said.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Captain, uh, Tomitani, yeah. Definitely, um, I know, uh, you guys is one of the department that receive a lot of calls because I go to the RCC, 911 meetings and Hawthorne is one of the, uh, busy, uh, station that receive a lot of calls. So I see that, uh, you guys have a plan of action, so that is very good. So I appreciate all of that. And also, you know, uh, all the respond that you guys are making the community actually is very good because I'm getting feedback from people, um, that, um, you guys are out there. Soon as we make a phone call or send you an email, you guys go and analyze the situation and you're very proactive of creating solution for those type of problems, you know, from the homeless to, to street racing. So I appreciate all of that. So thank you very much for the work you guys are doing. Outstanding job.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's try to, let's try to kind of go through this a little bit more efficiently, please.
We'd like to bring up Mr. Leung from Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council member. Oh, okay, sorry. For Public Works, uh, there will be some changes for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, we will be adding more staff and field vacancy to help us move the upcoming grant projects. Uh, we will also start using the software Endograph, uh, which will enable us to issue permits online more efficiently. Uh, so for the, this fiscal year, 2021, 2022, uh, we have accomplished the followings. We implemented, uh, SB 1383 program, uh, regarding organic waste reduction. Uh, we implemented parking tee pilot programs. Uh, we continue and implemented illegal dumping hotline programs and we updated and upgraded the default to 100% green energy with Clean Power Alliance. And we continue and implemented COVID, uh, COVID-19 disinfecting respond team. Uh, we also constructed and completed seven capital improvement projects. And these projects are Perry Avenue Improvement Project Phase Two, Holly Park Improvement Projects, Ramona Park, El Segundo Boloa Pavement Rehab, uh, pavement rehab for airport taxiway, uh, traffic signal modification project at the intersection of El Segundo and Ramona. And we also did sewer improvement project of 2022. Uh, we also secure MTA and Kanti funding agreement for six grant projects totaling about $27 million. Uh, for the next fiscal year, 2022, 2023, uh, our work plan, uh, will include field vacant public works positions, oversee and manage illegal dumping program, oversee and manage SB 1383 program and oversee and manage FEMA grants, um, which is related to COVID-19 and also to retrofit building, uh, facilities. Uh, we will be preparing design and construction plan including environmental studies for seven capital improvement projects. Uh, we will construct four new capital improvement projects and the projects include Holly Glance Park improvements, Gymtop Park improvements, 120 Street Traffic Signal Improvement Projects, Railroad Crossing, um, Improvement at Aviation. Uh, this is a joint project with the city of El Segundo. Let's see. We will continue to coordinate environmental events, um, such as paper shredding, electronic waste, hazards, uh, household hazard waste and earth days. Uh, we will conduct monthly and quarterly reporting for project grants, uh, such as SB 1, MTA, Highway Safety Improvement Program and FEMA. And we will continue to assist, um, annual audit, um, with MTA, Caltrans, CalOES, uh, FEMA and CalRecycle. And that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
A quick question.
Sure.
Evelyn, uh, thank you for your presentation. Any news about the water conservation coming up down the pipe because of the drought?
Yeah, we, uh, we are working with the, our two water company, uh, Golden State and, uh, California Water. So, uh, we are working with them to come up with some type of plans.
Right. Thank you, great job.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
So I noticed that you didn't mention the local travel network. Is that, are you, are you including that in one of your capital improvement programs or is that something else?
Uh, that is included, but, um, it, it doesn't take as much time and effort as the other grant project that we have. Uh, the reason I did not mention it because the other grant project has a shorter deadline and we, we need to rush to finish those, uh, phases of the projects.
But you are working on.
Yes, it is included, yes.
Thank you.
No further questions? Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Okay, we'd like to bring up Mr. McLean from planning.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. Planning had a, um, a lot going on, but really the big accomplishment of the year was the housing element, the environmental justice element and the, and the revised safety element. And that, um, housing element especially has, uh, triggered a lot of, uh, need for zoning changes and general plan changes, which were partially budgeted in the last year, but because the housing element went back and forth with the HCD a couple of times, we need to, to budget more because we needed more changes than we anticipated. Um, other changes that, uh, that, to the budget that we're expecting, um, also revolve around cannabis and, and, um, the re- restructuring of code enforcement, which is nearly complete. But I think within two months, we'll have a fully-staffed code enforcement division, which will be, um, four full-time officers, including a supervisor and a couple, a couple at least of part-time officers to cover weekends, which is going to be a huge improvement over what I have now, which is two full-time officers. So we'll see a lot of progress there. So, um, work planned for the, for the next fiscal year, we have to put a lot of focus on, on the general plan amendments and the zone changes that come out of the housing element. But also any economic development strategies that we come up with also will have zone changes, um, that are necessary to implement them. The same goes for the cannabis. Cannabis has a very important land use component and that requires general plan changes and zone changes. So there's a lot of work on the planning side for all three of those. We're also going to be focusing on staff training again. That goes for code enforcement as well as for planning. And lastly, by this time next year, hopefully we'll have, we'll have either adopted or significantly revised four out of eight mandated elements of the general plan. And we really should address at least two others and then we're just two away from doing the whole thing, which are easy and cheap ones. So I've added a little bit of additional to the budget for that. So we, our general plan was done in 89 and 90. It's more than 30 years old and the world has changed an awful lot. So we need to take care of that as well. That's the work plan for the year.
Quick question.
Yes.
So you have a 42% increase, um, from last year. So it's mostly in the additional personnel or?
No, part of it is in the additional personnel, but the bigger part is in contract services. And these are, these are, this year and next year's budget are really one-time expenses. It'll go down after that.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was 18%, so.
Yeah.
I misstated the percentage increase, so it's light.
It's not that bad.
Um, it's, it's, it seems like it's more than the city attorney's budget, so I don't know. We gotta look at you now. Go ahead.
I have to mention that our department is also one of those that absorbed a portion of the city, what was the city attorney was, uh, paying for in the past, so. There's another thing.
I'm just making light of stuff, man.
I know, I'm just gonna take that chance to plug that though. Yeah, code enforcement uses vehicles.
Makes sense.
But you're right, you've seen vehicle rental in a lot of other departments though, which is an interesting question to bring up.
Yeah, I was just curious. Sometimes the verbiage, the language is, could be different, so that we don't just assume.
Elise, can you explain that it's not actually a rental? Or can you go into depth on the, why you would see that in other departments, please?
Yeah, I do see vehicle rental in the finance department as well.
So that's for all the vehicles that all of the departments use and that's a maintenance fee for each of the departments. So every year, those vehicles have to be maintained, they have to be gassed up, they have to be cleaned. They have, all of that goes into, um, the fees that each department pays for the, depending on how many vehicles they use. Um, so, you know, one department might be, might pay $10,000 because they have one vehicle. But let's say the police department might pay a hundred thousand because they have, you know, 50 vehicles or 30 vehicles. It's, it's city vehicles, but they're being maintained by our equipment staff.
Question, do we, um, are we leasing these vehicles? Do we own these vehicles?
The city owns those vehicles, yeah. And it's, and, um, so it's part of the public works, um, staff, but it's for, um, I believe it's four, right? Four mechanics, we have four mechanics and they're the ones that maintain those vehicles.
Okay, so the cost of maintenance is being allocated across all departments?
Yes, anyone who uses a vehicle has to pay for that vehicle.
Maybe we should say, uh, vehicle maintenance, not rental, so for, for the future. Yeah.
Why would a, quick question, why would you be having vehicle rental under your department?
Uh, because we have, there is a vehicle that, that's being used by licensing and by, uh, the finance department.
In what capacity?
Um, so the licensing, when they need to go out and, so if, if they need to go out and inspect a, a business or.
Okay. Okay, that sounds right. Thank you for explaining that, appreciate it. Okay.
Um, we'd like to bring up, no more questions for planning?
Thank you, Greg.
Um, we'd like to bring up Mr. Wang from Building and Safety.
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council Member. I'm Peter Wang, Director of Building and Safety. Building and Safety continue, you know, trying to, uh, improve our services and to, uh, help, you know, the, uh, general public in turn of economic development and, uh, construction building. And our, uh, proposed changes, you know, from last year, actually, you know, from previous year before too, we're trying to, uh, adding more member and to, uh, to meet a public demand and then especially in this, uh, information, information technology, you know, the, uh, age. So we're, we're trying to adding, uh, one, um, one more building permit technician at a public counter and then so we can have a, a timely service for the phone and, uh, also and for the people at the counter. And then we're trying to add a senior plant checker engineer in the plant check section so to, uh, uh, help out the, all the complication of the, of the law and the technology and also for all the, uh, new, uh, new, uh, design method. And we're trying to adding a part-time building inspector in building section and also to help out and, uh, on the biz license, uh, for the, for the new biz license, you know, the, uh, portion and to, trying to cut off the wait time. And also we're trying to adding a one, uh, part-time, you know, the types clerk to help out all the, you know, record search and also, uh, to, uh, uh, perform a digital copy and digital, uh, scanning on our new, uh, procedure to, uh, convert the, all the paperwork to be a digital file. And what we're, what we have accomplished, uh, in last year is we established implement the plant check protocol for the mechanical plumbing and electrical plant. And because this is all. And because this is all the specialty. And a lot of small city wasn't able to supply all this specialty, you know, the people. We were able to secure a group, you know, of consultant was in a very, very economic way to provide us the special consultant on the mechanical plumbing and electrical then all the inspector can make a decision on site. And we also implement improvement online inspection request protocol. So make no mistake, everybody make no excuse about there's a missing phone call so everything go to the internet, everything has some written document on it. And we reduce, you know, the normal inspection wait time from six hour to two hour window. So exactly two hour, our inspector will be there. And then also, people know they don't have to wait, you know, till like for the lunch or something. And we'll restart, you know, the gradually start converting all the, you know, the existing old plan or paperwork and to be a digital format into the, our network drive. Our work plan on the, the next year will be starting the implement of virtual city project. The building and safety will continue providing adequate, you know, and sufficient training to building and safety personnel to familiarity and the accuracy of operating the new Anagov software. Starting record, you know, trans, you know, firing and, you know, the, on the logbook data, plant check correction, and inspection record to the Anagov system. So this one can provide a faster and transparency to all the general public. And we will implement additional training to the building and safety personnel on the counter procedure, plant check code knowledge, and inspection technique. Also additional training on customer service and conflict of handling area. Because a lot of, you know, our personnel are pretty new. And we, and especially, you know, the trying to handling the conflict, it require a lot of experience. And also, training will definitely improve in this kind of conflict handling situation. So that's why we need to, you know, to improve that part and provide proper training for it. And we will start transferring data of existing paper record into digital format and create a digital catalog for the future search. This implementation will reduce storage space and facilitate all public inquiry. And finally, you know, the, we were starting, because this is the third years again, we were starting to adopt the new twenty-twenty-two California code and into the twenty-twenty-three City of House Home Building Code. This conclude my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'd like to bring up Mr. Kim, our city attorney.
Thank you. I wrote a narrative for this presentation, but I, I think I'm gonna stray away from that. And just, you know, it's been already close, a little bit over a year since I've been appointed as the city attorney. And admittedly, when I was first appointed, I was very confused about the budget and the accounting process here in the city for the city attorney's department. So I'm getting a better understanding, and I'm still confused about how it had been done in the past. And the audit of the office kind of clarified some of the issues that we need to resolve. And I just want you to turn to your, your folder to the city attorney's department accounting section. Because I just want to go through these, some of the items on here. The city attorney's department accounting and the budget is divided into four sections. That's administration, prosecution, workers' compensation, insurance reserve liability. And I think the confusing part of the way we have been doing accounting in the past is mixing up things between administration, prosecution, and insurance reserve liability. And I'm trying to clarify that. So if you look at, let me just start out with the salary for administration first. As you are aware, we lost one of the assistant city attorney that was on the administration. Along the, about halfway through the fiscal year, I made one of the prosecutors work in the administrative section. So as you will see, that although we budgeted salaries for administration of three hundred seven thousand, as of end of April, we had spent hundred sixty-four thousand in salaries. So it's much less than what we had budgeted. In terms of prosecution, that's on page three of four. In terms of salary, as, as you may be aware, right now, our prosecution is made up of three contract attorneys. This next fiscal year, by next fiscal year, I plan to staff the assistant city attorney position for the administration side and one deputy city attorney for the prosecution side and have two contract attorneys. And, you know, the way I budgeted this is that I was expecting two attorneys to be full-time from the prosecution unit. However, I spoke to one of the contract attorneys, and she preferred to stay as a contract attorney and work part-time because of the flexibility in her schedule. So then you notice, you would note that, and I'm sorry to skipping back and forth, but going to page two of four on the administration side, you will see for the next proposed budget, we have a contract services in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars and receivership in the, in the, in the amount of hundred fifty thousand dollars. Whereas in prior years, those were pretty much zero. And that's the increase. And, and most of that, a big portion of that will go to very complex and multiple lawsuit that's arising out of the Hawthorne Mall situation. Aside from that, we also have the charter city that's gonna go on a ballot, that's gonna take outside counsel consultation. Some of the income, low-income housing development that we plan on next fiscal year, that's gonna also require consultation from the outside counsel as well. But I want you to, you know, the workers' compensation is pretty much stable as it was before. But I want you to look at the insurance reserve liability section, particularly page two of three. The actual from twenty-twenty-one and what was budgeted for twenty-twenty-two. You will see contract services in the amount of actual for twenty-twenty-one in the amount of three hundred sixty thousand dollars. Also, receivership in the amount of two hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Now, the budget for the next fiscal year for those two line items are zero. And it, let me explain the reason why we're doing that is that most of the insurance reserve liability goes through ICRMA, the pooled insurance for multiple cities. And aside from paying very high premium, and that's gonna double the next fiscal year, which is in the following pages. But what happens through ICRMA is that it's administered through AdminSure. So we have a self-retention amount currently of five hundred thousand. That's like a deductible for your insurance policies. It was before two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So anything, any case, that includes all costs associated with that particular case. So the way it was done before is I could tell it was divided up into litigation expenses, things that would include such items as cost for court reporters, subpoenas, things of that nature. But that's all done through the ICRMA. So they bill us, and we would have to ask to separate those items. And although we pay up to the deductibles, beyond that, it's covered by the insurance. So instead of doing that, what I, you know, and it's really not necessary to break it down to small line items such as general legal expense and things of that nature, because that can be broken down even further. And it's really not necessary to do that. What I have done is, instead of, for instance, you'll see criminal prosecution side in here. It really doesn't belong on this, on this page. But in any case, what I have done instead is budgeted two point two million dollars for the next fiscal year for settlements and judgments. Now, the, the reason why I'm coming up with that amount, and it's, it's not a calculated type of amount, is we're estimating that at, at the worst scenario, we're gonna have about four cases that the city may have to pay out beyond its self-retention amount, which is five hundred thousand dollars. So that would come up to two million dollars. But as you're aware, through this past fiscal year, we've had settlements and dismissals of civil lawsuits. None of them have ever even come close to our self-retention amount. But I just want to make sure that should we have something happen during the next fiscal year that, that I cannot expect. Should it happen, and it's a very serious situation, then I want to make sure, and we have multiple of those cases, I want to make sure that we have budget for that. So two point two million is, is a large amount. But I don't expect it, if, based on what I've seen this year, and hopefully, we will not see that type of multiple of, that type of huge case. I do want you to be aware that the following page, page three of three, which is the insurance premium page. ICRMA premium had been around two million a year. It's gonna jump to about four million this coming fiscal year. ICRMA had detailed explanation for that in terms of their tier of insurance policies that they purchase. And the rise in the, in cost of these policies, mainly from police liability from different lawsuits for all the cities with police departments. Is there, you know, we, we're gonna look into this fiscal year, we're gonna look into potential issues of how we can resolve this. Because at this rate, I, the, the rate, the premium is increasing. I don't know whether it'll be sustainable for most of these cities. But that is the insurance industry based on the number of lawsuits being filed against police agencies. In terms of what we can expect in the future, right now, the city's in a, in a trial. And I, I don't remember, you know, maybe because I was on the prosecution side and I didn't really see the number of trials being conducted in, in civil side. But to me, if you're reaching where an attorney is demanding settlements beyond our self-retention amount, then it's worth the trials, based on the case, based on the evidence on the case. So I, I think you're gonna see a more aggressive litigation. And it may be that, you know, you may see some big judgment. I can't predict how the jury's gonna award these type of cases. But I think I would tend to be a little bit more aggressive in our litigation policies, basically. So I think we're seeing that with the cases going on with the, with Hawthorne Plaza. And I think you're gonna see that in some of the police cases, so. But, you know, we do, I feel safe with the self-retention amount and the coverage with ICRMA. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, comments through the chair, if.
Sure.
Yes, possible.
So, um, jump around a little bit. ICMR, ICRMA, right, four million dollars, jump from two point five to four million. So, so that's a function of police litigation, mostly. Is that correct?
It is. A big, big reason for that is litigation related to any cities that have police departments. So there's a, I think there is a, a larger amount of jury verdicts in terms of damages being awarded since some of the highly publicized police lawsuit type of cases. So the insurance carriers are making it more difficult to have policies covered for cities with police agencies. And if they do, then their rate is extremely high. So.
Let me ask you, are they evaluating agency by agency? Or just like, oh, you have a police agency, so it's in this much increased risk? Or do they look at, say, well Hawthorne, based upon whatever information or factors, you know, you guys kind of have this level of risk versus Redondo Beach has a different level of risk?
My understanding is that our self-retention amount is based on the past police liability type of cases. So our self-retention amount of five hundred thousand, although it would increase from two hundred fifty, is relatively low compared to other neighbor cities like Inglewood. I think their self-retention amount is over a million dollars. So those are different factors. But in terms of the actual premiums for other cities in ICRMA, I don't have that figure in front of me. But I know that that premium increase is across the board for all cities.
You're gonna be looking into some options if.
I'm gonna look into it.
Look into some options.
Yes, look into some options. I know that at one point, that our office looked into getting commercial insurance policies. And that really, didn't really result in anything. But, you know, basically, if you think about it, and this is for council to consider in the future, if we're paying four million a year for insurance coverage, and that amount is gonna increase in the future years, you know, what is the maximum exposure for the city? Those are things that you may want to consider. What's the history of highest payout we had on a case? And I think those are ways that possibly we could look into creative way of providing coverage for the city.
Perhaps self-insuring. You go ahead and take ten million dollars and put it into a fund or an account.
Perhaps. That, that's one, one of the ideas that I was thinking. And, and, you know, this, we would have to, of course, study it and come back to council and, and council to analyze this. You know, we could have a fund issued by bond of, let's say, we want to make sure we have fifty million dollars or seventy-five million dollars as a security.
To maintain that bond is less than four million dollars a year.
Maybe.
It makes sense to do it.
So those are options that I think, we need to think out of the box when it comes to amounts such as this, that maybe there are alternative measures.
I think it's a great idea to do that. And then your number of two point two million dollars for potential settlements. So you're saying that if, you know, we only had to pay out two hundred thousand dollars in settlements, and that, that two million dollars would go directly to, to like, into surplus? For the general fund in general?
It would go back to general fund.
Awesome.
So, and we based it on, you know, at most, we could expect four cases that goes beyond our self-retention amount. That would come out to two million.
And then, I don't know what else to be having here. So just wanna repeat you. Make sure everything's broken up into kind of four different, is it four different areas?
There's four different sections for city attorney budget.
And then you took out a lot of frivolous line items out of the insurance reserve. Is that what it was?
Yeah, and, and I think that was the source of a lot of the confusion. For instance, if you look at twenty-twenty-one actuals, I mean, these are amounts that I know a lot of this, especially contract services, doesn't belong in the insurance reserve. If you see contract reserve, contract services for administration, twenty-twenty-one is hardly anything. You know, so those are things that I'm trying to correct. And if it, if it results in a higher budget for a city attorney, so be it. I mean, that's the way it is.
Yeah, we just want to make sure it's transparent.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have a comment?
Just a comment. Thank you, Mayor. Can we make, can we make a promotional? How should I say it? A promotional ask, a request from the city, its workforce, and all of those that are in it, that in a year, say for instance, in our new fiscal year, that we promote zero, zero human error? I'm, I'm talking, I know it's easier said than done, but it's probably never been done. But the same way that we have, you know, things that we do for our workforce, such, such as, you know, open enrollment, you know, appreciation, these types of things. I think if there was some sense of a, a program, a promotion, that if we could award those at the end of the year with regards to zero liability that we've, that we, that we had in a year. I think it's just a good way of promoting safety. I think it's just a good way of promoting collaboration among all of us and teamwork to promote the safety factor. But more importantly, a goal that we want to set for ourselves to assure that we don't have these types of liabilities versus saying, you know, we're gonna have liability, we're gonna be paying out, we're gonna be doing this. Hey, department, department, give a number of what you think your liability is gonna be. I mean, that's kind of like, you know, is there other things that we could do to promote safety? To promote, you know, self-discipline, to promote just however we need to do it in a year? I mean, even if it's something new that we're starting. I mean, even if it's something new that we're starting, that I think every department head give a goal, set a goal, and request that of their staff. And I'm talking like, you know, less, less car accidents, less damages to vehicles, less payouts for trips and falls, less, I'm just talking like a promotional way that we're taking, you know, different, a different way of just being proactive. I'd like to see that ultimately.
Well, we can definitely do that. I'll discuss that further with Mr. Norris along with our risk manager and discuss it and come up with certain policies and try to come up with some promotional efforts. Having said that, there are areas of any municipality that we always carry the risk of lawsuits and liabilities, at least especially in the police area. I mean, they're in a, they're in an area where they have to deal with the unknown and the unexpected. So that's where most of the risk comes in. And, you know, we can do our best to try to minimize that risk, and we'll definitely make that effort.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. What do we have? Are we almost close to the end?
Almost.
We don't want to butt up against the general meeting.
We have Mr. Norris from Community Service, and then we just have one more.
Two more items left. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. What this narrative is going to encompass is two departments, Community Service Department, Cable Department. Changes from the last year, we had a great project, thank you to Public Works at Holly Park for a community garden. We have over 30 plots there with few still available. Community Services started a food truck initiative here at City Hall on Thursdays. We are continuing to do COVID testing at the Betty Amesworth parking lot, looking to extend that testing additional six months if that's available. Worked along with, Cable has worked along with PD for PSAs for different items as far as life-saving events. Cable TV has started a newsletter that's very good, goes out to the community, goes out to the employees, and we're looking for individuals to sign up for the monthly information. That was part of the communication strategic plan that we implemented. So that's one of the goals there, to communicate with the public. And also Cable's covering the Canvas Program Working Committee. That's one of the additional meetings that they're covering, monthly or weekly, biweekly, excuse me. So those are the changes from the prior year. Going into accomplishments for this current fiscal year, Park secured $670,000 in Measure A funding, also secured $3.4 million for Clean Park Grants. We actually reopened Memorial Center for Youth Sports. We started a trash can initiative. The Dodgers donated $30,000 for a part-time employee to oversee our youth sports baseball program. We actually have a pickleball court at Ramona Park that we're going to implement a summer program for seniors to enjoy that item. And just a side note, we're going to work with the Park Foundation next year to help us stripe the Betty Amesworth with permanent lines that we can offer pickleball full time inside the Betty Amesworth gym. The Clerk's Office, or excuse me, the Cable Department has helped the Clerk's Office with its management agenda, Prime Gov software. We continue to promote Hawthorne businesses and events through digital images on our marquees, private and public. And our work plan for next year is to streamline our tree requests, analyze rates and fees for community rentals at the Betty Amesworth Memorial Center, increase our homeless services, actually add more content to our social media platforms. We try to post once a day or once every other day, so we're going to try to increase that to have more information about what's going on in the city to the public. Archive our entire council meetings, catalog on digital format, and just actually work together and communicate with all the other departments. And that's the work plan for the Community Service Department, Cable Department. Any questions?
What's the final item?
All right. Last but not least, we have Ms. Mack for the Housing, CDBG Home and Properties.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. It's an honor and a pleasure to be before you today. So the Housing Department administers the city-owned low-income affordable housing units. They carry 55-year restrictive covenants with them. There are 38 units there. We also administer the Section Eight program, or also known as the Housing Choice Voucher Program, the CDBG and Home Programs. I am responsible for a little more than $20 million in our department. My budget is made up of, the CDBG and Home Program makes up about 38, 38.5% of that total budget. The Section Eight Program is about 60% of that total budget, and the City Properties make up about 1.5% of that budget. Some of our accomplishments for this year were the Emergency Rental Assistance Grant Program, where we were able to pay owners directly about $587,000 in rental assistance due to COVID. We also launched an affordable housing waitlist for the first time for the city-owned properties. We also launched the following emergency business programs, the Emergency Housing Choice Voucher Program, which is separate than Section Eight Program, and the Commercial Vasad Improvement Program. We also started working on the Bridge Housing Program. And we were able, through our Housing Choice Voucher Program, to attract 13 new owners. We're always trying to attract more owners to the Housing Choice Voucher Program to increase the housing stock for the residents who participate in it. That means we were able to assist 37 new families this year. That means additional funding for administrative fees for the Housing Department. We also promoted one new staff member through the help of our new housing, our HR team, to the housing coordinator position, which is much needed, and we're still working for, with them on additional positions that we need also. So our work plans going forward are to work diligently with the city properties to get them at a, a safe foundational spot. We need to add a property manager position or hire a property management company to address the needs of these, these buildings. I will be coming to the council to potentially request an increase in the ARPA funds that was provided to me to create a replacement reserve account and an annual unit turn account. These accounts will allow us to not suffer a vacancy loss when our units go vacant for whatever reason, and allow us to flip them quickly and to rehouse them so that we can continue to sustain our funding. Additionally, I would like to add a new line item for training. Previously, we've been able to navigate not having to pay for training for staff, but for our staff, as they increase the promotion, more responsibilities, those trainings cost. So I've managed to take some funding from our postage and add it to our training so that our staff can be kept up to date with the most present requirements. We, last year, we decreased our maintenance operations a little bit by about $3,000, so that was good. We're also working on the vacancies in our city properties, and we hope to have those filled soon. We've changed the process for how individuals are selected for those properties, making sure we thoroughly check for previous evictions, criminal background checks, histories, all of that, which wasn't done in the past. So it's a little longer process, but it will ensure tenants who hopefully will pay their rent timely. Also, there was an increase due to COVID, still trailing that of about $17,000 in utility cost. And so what we're trying to do is teach the residents how to be fiscally responsible with using their utilities so that we don't have to incur such a great cost for those utilities that we are responsible for. Also, we will continue to simply just administer the programs that you guys have already approved within our CDBG and Home Programs, also within our CDBGCV programs, which are emergency assistance programs. We're currently working on creating a plan for the home ARPA funding that we received that will be coming to the council at the next city council meeting on May 24. Also, we are working to define a project for about $2.8 million that we have in our Home Program for home requisition, home acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale or rental. So those can be leveraged with some other dollars to maybe create some affordable housing or something there that we need to use before we lose those dollars with HUD. And we are seeking to lease up about 50 to 80 families this year through the emergency, through the regular Section Eight Program, again, trying to increase our allocation with HUD through that. And we just want to continue to work to, work on the revitalization of the city-owned properties. And once we have secured enough funding to do that, put our request for bids out and get those contracts going. And it may have to happen in phases, but whatever has to be done, that's, that's the commitment that we're making. That's the Housing Authority report.
Through the chair. How much of your budget comes from the general fund?
$0 come from the general fund.
That's cool. Thanks.
Okay, I guess we're good. So that's the end of the presentation. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
I have one more question to ask Felice, very briefly.
Go ahead.
I noticed, and I was very pleased to notice, that all the departments had increased their training budgets.
Yes.
Is that by your recommendation?
Recommendation from city manager and other members of council who have requested training for all staff, yes.
I think that's very important for the betterment of the staff, for their efficiency, for their, you know, just for, in general, overall good to improvement in their ability to do their jobs.
Yes.
Training is very important. So I'm very pleased to see that you've increased everyone's training budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
So before we adjourn the meeting, kudos to all of your team, Mr. City Manager Felice, for working on this, and for all the team members that participated in assembling this. It's looking good. Obviously, you know, everything's going to increase in cost, but you had good justifiable explanations as far as what I can see. So thank you so much.
Thank you to the all head departments. Thank you very much.
So this meeting is adjourned at 5:41, and we'll see you guys in a few minutes.